Good evening, it is now 6:00 PM. On Tuesday, June 4th, I like to call our regular session council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll please?
Branham.
Here.
Pugh.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Terracio. Weaver.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton. Madam Chair, I do see that Councilwoman Terracio is online and she's logging in right now.
Councilwoman Terracio.
And Councilwoman Newton.
Alright, we'll give her a minute. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Newton. Terracio. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is invocation.
Recording in progress.
Councilwoman Livingston, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'm here to our chapel here.
Our official chapel.
Mr. English.
Let us go before God's throne. Father, it's in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ that we come to you now, thanking you, Lord, for life, for help, for strength, for this day, for our families, for our friends, for our loved ones. God, we thank you that the task that you have set before us, Lord, that you have given us wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and revelation. God, we thank you that as we continue to work as unto the Lord, Lord, that you will give us the guidance that we need, direct our paths. We thank you for each and every citizen of Richland County. God, we are so grateful for the staff as they carry out the mandates every day. And God, continue to lift us up, continue, Lord, to allow Richland County to shine, to grow brighter and brighter each day. Now, Father, as we come together for this most tedious and longest day of council, Lord, let us agree that this budget will be balanced and there will be no raised taxes. These are all blessings we ask and thanks we give in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Amen. Please stand for predilection. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have 4A. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For 4A, could we reconsider those minutes, particularly 19A, which is found on page 16 of our packet tonight? Or move to reconsider.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Councilwoman Terracio, can you please state the item that you're asking for reconsideration again?
Yes, Madam Chair. It would be 19A, the report of the Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Committee. I got a little too excited about that motion and the committee still has work to do, so I would ask my colleagues to please reconsider the motion so that we can continue work on it in committee.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for reconsideration of item 14A and the special call meeting minutes from May 14, 2024.
I'm sorry, did I say 14? I meant 19. A.
Alright.
Sorry.
19A.
Thank you.
Well, we had a second, we were in discussion. I was making sure there was no other discussion. Huh?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Talks are early, but...
No, you're fine.
Is that on the revised agenda?
She's referring to the meeting minutes that were in the packet that was sent out. So in the minutes, she's saying, yeah, not the agenda, yeah, she's referring to the minutes from May 14.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so for clarification, the original motion that was made by Councilwoman Terracio and seconded by Branham, I believe said 19. I think when I repeated it, I missed, I repeated it wrong. But I want to confirm that the original motion did say 19.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Baron's second. Alright, Madam Clerk.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Okay, and Madam Chair, do we now need a separate motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
As amended? Okay. Move to approve 4A as amended and also 4B and 4C, unless there's any objection.
Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Livingston. Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is item five, adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No recommended changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to defer items 8A, 14A, and 17A until our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Second that motion.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item six, presentation of resolutions. We have 6A, a resolution recognizing the life of Cedric Lamont Ritchie II, and 6B, a resolution recognizing June as the joy of fatherhood month. I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Sorry, point of order. I apologize. I was led into the Zoom meeting late and just realized that part of my thing was muted. This is Councilwoman Newton. Was I recognized as part of roll call for attending the meeting?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, well, if the record could reflect that I am indeed here, and I thought that you heard me vote yes for the previous items, but apparently you couldn't.
You are noted. The clerk has you on the roll moving forward. Thank you. I entertain a motion for item 6A and B. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can we get me into? Sorry, this is Councilwoman Terracio.
Yes, ma'am. When you made your motion related to the minutes, you were then added to the record, so you are now in the meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
I entertain a motion for 6A and 6B.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. 6A, Councilwoman English, you're recognized.
Resolution recognizing the life of Cedric Lamont Ritchie II. Whereas on June 4, 2008, Cedric Lamont Ritchie II graced his parents Cedric Lamont Ritchie Senior and Lakeisha T. Ritchie and the rest of the world with his presence. Cedric transitioned to his eternal heavenly home on Wednesday, November 29, 2023. And whereas Cedric's unwavering strength and endurance inspired all who knew and loved him throughout his life and has continued to inspire people today. Cedric was diagnosed with BCSIS1L, a rare gene deficiency. He was one of only three cases worldwide, the sole African-American and the only male diagnosed with this condition. And whereas Cedric faced adversity from the tender age of six months old when he battled infantile spasms, defying doctors' predictions and demonstrating extraordinary tenacity and relentless courage throughout his life. And whereas despite the challenges imposed on his condition, Cedric's infectious joy, radiant spirit, and profound impact on his family, friends, and community remained steadfast and unwavering. And whereas Cedric's legacy of resilience and inspiration led to the creation of the book, Silent Conversation Through the Eyes of My Father, and touched the lives of countless students, athletes, and individuals worldwide. And whereas in honoring Cedric, his courageous life, his courageous battle, as well as his birthday, the Ritchie family seeks to raise awareness of rare diseases such as BCS1L gene deficiency and other mitochondrial conditions and recognize the struggles faced by those faced with these health issues, physical disabilities, and mental stressors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Richland County Council members, Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Terracio, Don Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Overture Walker, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton hereby proclaims Tuesday, June 4, 2024, as Cedric L. Ritchie II Day. Let us celebrate his life, reflect upon his indomitable spirit, and extend our compassion to those navigating similar journeys as well as those who love and provide care for them. Thank you.
Did you have someone here?
Yes, I do. Ms. Cedric Ritchie Senior Dad. Hey, Mom.
On behalf of my family and my son, today is his birthday. Would have been 16. On behalf of my son and our family, we want to say thank you for this honor and celebrating this life and supporting families like ours and other children with disabilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he said it all. I most certainly appreciate it. It's quite an honor. It's been difficult, but I'm just thankful for this recognition on today. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. You recognize Vice Chair Pugh.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I want to, I want to thank the Ritchie family for sharing their son with us. I've been knowing the Ritchie family for a long time. I went to college with Cedric's parents. And just to see how they worked through their situation and use their story to help other people. I just want to commend you guys because I know it's difficult to share your son with the world, and that's what you guys have done. And I don't know, Cedric, if you realize that your book has touched so many people that is afraid to share their story. I just want to thank you for being who you are and as well as your wife for being who she is and to say thank you.
Thank you. Next is 6B, a resolution recognizing June as a joy of fatherhood month. This is the, from the Honorable Shaquise Newton, but I'll be reading on her behalf this evening. Whereas fathers are an important cornerstone for strong families providing love, guidance, protection, and support to their children, the positive impact of fathers on their children's development cannot be overstated as they instill values, encourage growth, and foster resilience. The South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families, established in 2002, has been a beacon of support equipping teens of thousands of fathers across our state with the resources and knowledge needed to embrace reasonable, excuse me, to embrace responsible fatherhood. The long public-private partnership between the center and state, local, and private agencies has led to the center's expansion and innovation of programs to serve more dads better. When fathers actively lead and engage with their children, their young lives flourish socially, emotionally, and academically. The month of June provides an opportunity for all citizens of South Carolina to celebrate and honor the joys of fatherhood, recognizing the tireless efforts of fathers in shaping the future of our communities and our state. Now therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Yvonne McBride, Paul Livingston, Allison Terracio, Don Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Overture Walker, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton do hereby recognize June 2024 as Fatherhood Month in Richland County. We encourage all citizens throughout our county to express gratitude for the fathers in their lives, celebrate their contributions, and promote the active involvement of fathers in children's lives to enhance the lives of our children, build better citizens, and strengthen South Carolina families and communities. Do we have a representative from? Ms. Newton, you're recognized. Yes.
Thank you. Just briefly, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be there this evening. This request came in months after this trip was planned, but I do want to both acknowledge the extremely important work that the South Carolina, pardon me, Center for Fathers and Families does to elevate the importance of fatherhood and also just recognize the number of fathers that we have presently serving on Richland County Council. The expression is motherhood and apple pie, but that doesn't mean that we should forget the wonderful work and importance of fathers in the lives of our children and communities. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All recognized.
My name is Kareem Edwards and I am the President of the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Family. On behalf of my board, staff, and all the fathers we serve, I'd like to say a gracious thank you to the commission. Thank you for inviting folks to remember the month of June as Father's Day all month long. No one ever remembers, or excuse me, no one ever forgets Mother's Day, but you have a whole month to remember Father's Day. I am not only the president of the South Carolina Centers for Fathers and Family, I am a proud father and I live in a state of what I call paternal bliss. I'm also a track dad. My daughter runs track for grade collegiate and they were the 2A state champions. I see some familiar faces in here, so congratulations to Blythewood. But in all actuality, as the proclamation states, fathers are important and what's most important about fatherhood is for fathers to experience the joy of fatherhood. And at the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Family and locally through the Mittlands Fatherhood Coalition and Angela McDuffie and her team, we seek to make fathers great dads. So thank you for support and thank you for acknowledging June as the joy of Fatherhood Month.
Thank you. If you all will stick around, we're gonna get through our proclamation, then we'll have everyone over to the seal to take photos. Thank you. Next item is item seven, presentation of proclamations. Proclamation recognizing Blythewood High School Girls Track Team 5A State Champions. Vice Chair Pugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. We will have Public Information Office read our proclamation.
Proclamation recognizing Blythewood High School Girls Track Team State Champions. Whereas the Blythewood High School Bengals of Blythewood, South Carolina, competed in the 5A Track and Field State Championship on Friday, May 17, 2024. And whereas the Blythewood Bengals Girls Track and Field Team, led by Coach Alicia Hawkins, was crowned as state champions for the second consecutive year. And whereas the Blythewood High School Girls Track and Field Team excelled against 35A teams across South Carolina, winning by a margin of 33.5 points over the second place team. And whereas the team's athletes delivered outstanding performances, including first place finishes by Amina Roan in the 100-meter hurdles and Peyton Hightower in the 400-meter, as well as the first place finish by the 4x400-meter relay team of Madison Ross, Patience Lisbon, Alexandra Francique, and Peyton Hightower with a South Carolina number one time. Whereas De'ara Bolt, Alexandra Francique, Haley Hightower, Peyton Hightower, Mallory Hoag, Anna Kelly, Patience Lisbon, Amina Roan, Madison Ross, Olivia Taylor, and Journey Warren garnered all state accolades highlighting their dedication, skill, and sportsmanship. And whereas Coach Alicia Hawkins was named South Carolina's 2024 Track and Cross Country Coaches Association 5A Track and Field Coach of the Year for the second consecutive year, recognizing her leadership and commitment to excellence. And whereas the Blythewood High School Track and Field Team's success is supported by the contributions of all student athletes, their families, their coaches, and a host of educators alike. Now therefore be it proclaimed, Richland County Council Vice Chair Derek Pugh hereby recognizes the Blythewood High School Girls Track Team and congratulates them on their outstanding accomplishments and commendable performances.
The coach here.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for having us this evening and thank you for all your support. It has not been an easy journey. Of course, I mean, all of our girls are basically very high academic achievers and we're also very high athletic achievers, so I'm just thankful to be here. And we're just waiting to come back. We'll see y'all again next year. And also, on behalf of Blythewood Girls Track and Field Team, we do have a little, a mini size of our state championship trophy for you.
I would just like to take the moment to say, you know, in the past couple of days in the news, it's been a tumultuous time here in Richland County. So for us to be able to celebrate these young people' academic and athletic achievements at Richland County Council means a awful lot. Not only are these young ladies state champions one year, they're state champions two years. And we're in talks of changing the district name to Blythewood District to, for the two back-to-back championships. I just also want to make sure that people also understand that these young people won by 33.5, so that means they put a whooping on the people that they was playing. And I also know that most of these young ladies are underclassmen, and so that means we'll probably be back here two, three more times before it's all said and done. So thank you for everything that you're doing. And I see the other districts looking over here at me like, he's doing too much. But when you win championships back-to-back-to-back, you get to poke your chest out and you make sure that you recognize and help these young people be recognized to the people. I want to thank Dr. Ross because as soon as they won, it was probably 30 seconds after that he sent me a text message that said, "We did it again, sir. We'll see you at county council." So congratulations, young people.
Madam Chair. So I won't give all of the accolades that Councilman Pugh did, but as the other Blythewood resident on county council, it does our heart proud to not only have an opportunity to recognize these ladies as athletes, but as scholars. And it is our hopes that not only that as you matriculate through life, that you go away to college or you go to the finance school, which is the University of South Carolina, and you can stay here and get your education, but come back and be a part of this great county that you all are making a name for. You are making a name for us here in Richland County. And so as you go away and start thinking about college, just note that we want you to come back too. Congratulations, ladies.
Alright, so we will spend a few minutes and take photos over at the seal. First, we have the family of Cedric Lamont Ritchie, then followed by fatherhood. Okay, alright. And then we'll do Blythewood Girls Track Team. And then we'll do Blythewood Girls Track Team.
What's going on? How you doing? Congrats to your daughter.
Hi, Ms. Mc, how you doing?
I am. I hope you are too. You too, always. Gilbert, you go first, then I go.
Okay. How you doing? All right, one, two, three.
Mr. Weaver?
She might need to go up to the, she might need to, do you wanna go up on the desk? Yeah, none of the...
Peyton, Peyton, yeah.
Okay, all right, one, two. Okay. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
We're good? All right, yeah, you got it?
I'm gonna give just a few minutes to allow everybody a time to exit. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. No. Now, if up my trophy, it'd be a problem in here.
Well, it wasn't a problem when we was on the same team.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next item is item eight, reported the attorney for executive session items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have two items for executive session. A is Alvin S. Glenn Detention Center update pursuant to SE Code 30-4-70 subsection 82, and B, legal department budget, also subject to 30-4-70A2.
Thank you. Either of these require outside counsel?
No.
Do either of these require information that may impact any items that are upon our agenda or in the budget?
Uh, yes.
All right, I want the council to note there is legal advice the attorney would like to provide that is related to items on the agenda before we get to our second executive session. If anybody would like to make a motion to receive that advice before your vote, now would be a time to make the motion. If not, then you would have to wait till after your vote to receive the legal advice.
Move to go in the second session.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? You're recognized.
And I don't know if you, how, how much of this information can be provided, but the item, or what legal advice is given to, is being given to us as relates to the budget? Is there a specific item that will be covered?
Attorney Wright.
There are a number of specific items related to legal matters.
It's for items B and C.
Okay.
Adam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresha? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yeah?
Motion approved.
Thank you. We're now in executive session. You're recognized, Mr. Teresha.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't come off mute fast enough. I will vote yes, even though I cannot join.
Thank you.
See you in a little. Thank you. Motion to come out of the executive session?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q? McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yeah?
Motion approved.
Thank you. For the record, show no action was taken during executive session. Next item on the agenda is item nine, citizens input. A, nine A, excuse me, for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Councilman, Vice Chair Pew, you recognize?
And we don't have anyone that signed up for that particular item.
Thank you. Next is item ten, citizens input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pew?
Yes, ma'am. We have three people who signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you could come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak. Hey, Judy Mosley? Ms. Judy, if you can, I'm sorry, ma'am. And, and for the record, if I butcher your name, I apologize in advance. Ms. Jody, could you please state your name and your address for the record? And you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Ma'am, give me just a minute. We need to turn your mic on so everyone can hear you.
I'm Jody Mosley. I live at one zero zero eight Wotan Road in Columbia. It's in northeast, and we have a wonderful representative by the name of Jessica Mackey. And thank you, Jessica, for everything. I'm a small business owner, and I'm here on behalf of the Columbia Classical Ballet. My life's journey was to be on the stage. I studied and, and I was on the stage professionally, singing and dancing, and, um, but a few years back, I was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis. So, but you know what? I'm blessed because, first of all, I'm standing here talking to you. And, um, second of all, about twenty years ago, I received a phone call from the lovely Lee Lumpkin asking if I'd like to be on the board of the Columbia Classical Ballet. And of course, I accepted. Of course, then I got roped into doing all the props, costumes and stuff, but I loved every bit of it. And, um, but I was amazed being on the stage. I was not aware of, of how expensive and what, what needs to do, what we need to bring this talent and show this talent and this beautiful part of our lives and share it with people. It takes a lot. It takes a lot of energy, a lot of dedication, and it takes a lot of money. And, um, I was just really amazed by how much, but I tell you what. The ballet is a special thing. You see all this stuff going on in the world and watching the news and, uh, just go to the ballet and you feel so good. It's just so beautiful to watch those beautiful dancers. We have wonderful dancers. We have a wonderful board. And we have this, this outreach program where children and, and people that are not normally able, they can come and watch the ballet and, and we perform for them and under privilege, I want to say, but anyway, um, but a couple of years ago, last couple of years, we've gone through some really hard times.
It's Jody. That's your, that's your time, ma'am.
Okay, but anyway, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, ma'am.
And everything, and come see us at the ballet, okay? Thank you.
Next, we have Myra Nelson. And I just want to make this a little reminder. Funds for the Columbia City Ballet has already been discussed, so if you could refrain from asking for any funds, that would be great. So, Ms. Nelson, could you please state your name and address for the record? And you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Okay, I will try to be quick. My name is Myra Nelson, and I live at one two four White Birch Circle, and that's in Richland County. Uh, I am the vice chair of Columbia Classical Ballet. But, uh, and I will be moving to Texas in the near future, which is breaking my heart, actually. I hate to leave. Uh, I never thought I would say that, but I am very sad to leave. I would be remiss if I left without thanking this council for your support throughout the years. You have been very generous, and, um, we, I don't know if we would have survived without your standing behind us. And again, I just want to thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Smart. Ms. Smart, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
All right. My name is Lisa Smart. My address is seven twenty Kiwanah Road, Columbia two nine two oh five. Um, I'm also with Columbia Classical Ballet. I'm also on the board. And I also want to say thank you so much for your past and future support. We really couldn't do it without you. I'm not going to ask for any money. I'm not. I'm, I do, I truly want to say thanks. Because we, we really cannot do it without you, and our outreach is tremendously important. It's a huge part of our mission. And each of you, every day dips, and I don't mean potato chips. I came up with this the other day. I was thinking about, you know, what does it take? It takes a dip. It takes desire, inspiration, and a lot of perspiration. And I'd be willing to bet every one of you had the desire to serve. And you inspire, and when you step away and move on to something else, the next step in your life, you'll inspire somebody to take your seat. And I'm sure there's a lot of perspiration. I cannot imagine being in your chair because I know that everybody is asking for that thing that I'm not going to ask for. And they ask for it all the time. But we thank you for saying yes. Our dancers dip all the time. They definitely have the desire. They come from all over the world. And we are so proud of that. A lot of them are from right here in Columbia. And they inspire, and they inspire children, we hope children, because our kids need things to do. And that is the beauty of them being able to come to the Cogurt, to come downtown, to come to Columbia, to come to Richland County, particularly if they're traveling from outside of the area, and visit a college campus, see the opportunities. Maybe they will be inspired, maybe not to be a dancer, but maybe a choreographer, maybe to come to the university, any of our universities in town. There are so many pieces and moving parts like Jody mentioned. And, and they do perspire. If you haven't come to see us, we want to invite you to do so. And just thank you again so much for your support and for allowing us to do what we do and to desire inspire. And yes, we do perspire from time to time. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak.
Thank you. Next item is number eleven, report of the county administrator. Administrator Brown, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Want to draw your attention initially to page twenty-three of your packet. And one of the first items is related to the PIBA update. And this item is before you because there is a window of time in which the county has to provide feedback to people related to this particular area. So, on March sixth, twenty twenty-four, the People Board of Directors voted unanimously to amend the definition of employee for the purposes of eligibility to participate in the state insurance benefits program. This amendment allows councils of participating counties and municipalities to exercise a one-time irrevocable option to exclude their council members from the definition of employee. And while I have not taken action to do that, it is still required that I get and sign a document to PIBA letting them know what our county will do. So, it is my recommendation to continue to allow members to participate at your choosing, but I have to have your authority to execute into a document that says that's what we intend to do. So, the request from me is to allow me to execute that document, to communicate to PIBA that that will still remain an option if a member so chooses.
Madam Chair? You recognize Councilman Walker? Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yeah?
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, if I could ask for that item to be reconsidered?
Motion is second for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston? Tereshia?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Madam Chair, the next three items under the administrative nomination, I would request, if possible, that we could consider those all at the same time unless there is a concern for any one of these items not to be. These are all excess mitigation credits, which as in our normal practice, when we have agencies come before the body. Um, in this case, you have three. There's D.R. Horton, who is requesting to purchase four point eight wetlands credits for the construction of Granite Falls Residential Development. You also have Lexington Health, Inc., who is asking for four point seven one wetland credits for their commercial development and parking. And then you also have the South Carolina Department of Transportation, who is requesting the purchase of forty stream credits for the construction of I twenty-six riding project in Calhoun and Lexington Counties. All of these projects, if the council approves, will result in excess funding that will go into the transportation program, which is consistent with what we have done. So, this would not prohibit any of our projects from going forward. And so, staff's recommendation is for approval of all three of these mitigation requests this evening. So, that is the request of the staff.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
English? Yes.
Newton?
Yeah?
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Q?
Yes. No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston? Tereshia?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That does conclude my report unless there are any questions from the body.
Next is item twelve, report of the clerk of council. Um, Madam Clerk, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last meeting, council voted to set a date for strategic planning, and at this time, I will ask the council to please direct on which locations you would like to host this event in twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair? You recognize Councilwoman Baron?
I'd like to move to host our strategic planning forum in Rock Hill, South Carolina.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yeah?
Motion approved. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report of the chair. I do not have a report this evening. Oh, wait, I, I do just have a special thing I want to say. I wanted to say welcome back to Councilwoman Yvonne McBride, AKA Auntie.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm glad to be back.
Yes, we are glad to have you as well. That concludes my report. Uh, next item is item fourteen, open and close public hearings. Fourteen A, an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen motor vehicles in traffic, Article two, general traffic and parking regulations, Section seventeen dash nine through truck traffic prohibited so as to include Clearwater Road, Crestwood Road, and Edge Order Drive. This public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
No one signed up to speak for this item?
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Next is item four B, an ordinance amending Chapter twelve solid waste recycling and public sanitation, Article seven enforcement, Section twelve dash sixty-six penalties so as to amend the language therein. This public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
No one signed up to speak for this item either.
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Next is item fifteen, approval of consent items. Fifteen A, case number twenty-three. Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am. I move to approve items fifteen A through F.
Second.
Motion is second to approve items fifteen A through F. Question? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yeah?
Motion approved.
Any of these items need to be reconsidered? Administrator Brown?
Items D, E, and F?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion is second for items D, E, and F? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Q?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston? Tereshia?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English? Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next is item sixteen, third reading items. Sixteen A, an ordinance amending Chapter seventeen motor vehicles in traffic, Article two, general traffic and parking regulations, Section seventeen dash nine through truck traffic prohibited. through truck traffic prohibited so as to include Clearwater Road, Crestwood Road, and Edge Water Drive.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second and to open it up for discussion. I would like to, if I could, make a friendly amendment to the motion to add two additional roads to this. It would be to add Rizdon Way and Sparkberry Lane Extension. Would the maker of the motion be acceptable of that?
Yes, ma'am.
I can do. All right, we have a motion and a s-
Sorry.
Madam Chair, you recognize? Or Ms. Teresa, you have to, yes, ma'am, which one?
This is Ms. Newton.
You're recognized.
Um, so there's a request to add two new roads. Previously, with the other roads that went through council, we received information about the roads and why they were being requested and traffic impacts, et cetera, for the area. So is there additional information that you can share about these roads that you're requesting to be added? And if they've been vetted by our transportation or other appropriate staff?
Yes, I can share information about the roads and then, I don't know the full, I won't speak as far as vetting because I'm not sure exactly the full vetting process. But Sparkberry Lane Extension and Rizdon Way were roads that had previously requested the same, I guess, prohibiting the through truck traffic and had been requested at other public meetings with our transportation department, but it did not make its way to this list.
Okay, I guess, I mean, sorry.
I would answer, but I don't want to step out of line, but Ms. Newton, I think the answer is no, but you tell me the answer as far as the vetting question because I don't want to overstep.
Absolutely. We do have our staff here, but what I will say, Ms. Newton, is this cut-through area is an area that has been identified. And the actual offshoot of the neighborhood off Sparkberry Lane Extension, staff did bring it to my attention that Rizdon Way would be appropriate to be included because that's where through traffic cuts through, you know, from Sparkberry Lane Extension. So that it is something that has been identified, and this would not be prohibitive to the current consideration that the council has already made on these other streets and roads.
Okay.
Ms. Newton, any further question before we go to someone here?
Uh, no, I'm happy to hear more information. Thank you.
Counselor Weaver, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I understand what we're talking about. So this is off Two Notch Sparkberry Lane Extension, comes up, goes to Rizdon, then comes down into North Springs Road. Okay, so that would be no trucks, no trucks at all, no delivery trucks, or just no large semis, or all trucks? I just want to make sure I know what I'm-
Well, you say trucks. I feel like trucks is like not the appropriate language.
Oh, okay. If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
It's no, it's no through truck traffic. So it's basically large trucks cutting through the neighborhoods to bypass traffic that they don't want to have to sit in. I see what you're saying. All right, so they can't go around to try to get around Two Notch Road traffic. Delivery trucks could still go through and all that. Okay, okay, I'm good with it then.
Madam Chair?
Okay, just a moment. We have Ms. McBride, and then we'll have Ms. Teresa.
Madam Chair, is there additional cost to add these two lanes? Additional?
No, ma'am.
The prohibitive?
They're just the minimus. Maybe some signs. It's nothing prohibitive.
Okay.
Ms. Teresa?
Thank you. I just, I'm not familiar with, I heard Sparkleberry Lane, and then is it Rizdon? Can you maybe spell it so I can understand what road it is? Sorry.
Yes, it is in northeast Columbia, off of Two Notch Road, R-I-S-I-D-O-N Way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I think we're, I see one hand, but Ms. Teresa, you're good? Your hand's still up, but are you, did you get your question answered?
I did. Thank you. I'll lure it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Resounding yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
Oh, sorry, no.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item 16B, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 Solid Waste Recycling and Public Sanitation, Article 7 Enforcement, Section 12-66, penalties so as to amend the language therein.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
A motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
No.
Pew?
No.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next item is item 17A, an ordinance authorizing the levying of Ad Valerian property taxes, which together with the prior year's carryover and other state levies and any additional amount appropriated by the Richland County Council prior to July 1, 2004, will provide sufficient revenues for the operations of Richland County Government during the period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, so as to raise revenue, make appropriations, and amend the general fund, millage agencies, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and debt service funds budget for Richland County, South Carolina for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025. Now, I want to get clarification from staff. I know that items 17A and B are both related to the budget. Before we begin going through budget motions, do I need to also read item 17B, or can that happen later?
They're, they're separate items, so you can do them separately. But normally, when you talk about them, because as you move through the budget list, you go from, you know, various funds. So it's easier if you read them together so that they can all generally be considered as a part of the process.
To clarify, I'm gonna go ahead and read 17B. Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the levying of Ad Valerian property taxes, which together with the prior year's carryover and other state levies and any additional amount appropriated by the Richland County Council prior to July 1, 2024, will provide sufficient revenues for the operation of Richland County Government during the period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Each of my colleagues, please note that you have in front of you an updated 11 by 17 of document with motions that were submitted and all items that need to be voted on or receive a motion related to this year's budget also related to items 17A and B that I just read.
Madam Chair?
You recognize Ms. Teresa?
Thank you. I guess point of clarification, do we, you know, are, are we starting on motions? Like, can you?
Sure. So at this time, yep, at this time, we will start on motions related to budget items. And so we can start with grants. You could start with millage agencies. You could start with the general fund. Wherever you would like to start, someone can make the first motion, and we will begin to work through our entire list to take action on all items related to the budget. So now is that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
You recognize Ms. Teresa?
Thank you. So on the second reading budget motions list for fiscal year 2024, 2025, on page 233, move to approve items 1 through 9?
Madam Chair, if I may be recognized?
Give me just a minute. All right, so we have received a motion. Are you wanting to speak related to Ms. Teresa's motion? Yes, ma'am.
Because we have received an updated motion, we will need to read exactly what the motion is because you have a different number and she has a different number. So this updated copy does not reflect the numbers that she's mentioning.
So Ms. Teresa, in here in council chambers, there we were provided an updated document that does not match the agenda packet that you received. It does, but I think some of the numbers changed. So if you would provide, I guess, a little bit more detail in your motion category so we can make sure that we all match.
Okay, so these would be under number 1, Grants. Item 1 is approve ATAX revenue projections, $640,000. Approve ATAX use of fund balance, $135,000. Approve ATAX transfer out, $25,000. Approve ATAX committee recommendations, $750,000. Approve H-Tax revenue projections, $10,442,422. Approve H-Tax use of fund balance, $21,9470. Approve H-Tax transfer out, $4,985,350. Approve H-Tax committee recommendations, $600,000. Approve H-Tax council discretionary, $906,675.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to make a motion to pull out the last approved H-Tax committee recommendation.
Okay, Madam Chair, if you like, I can amend my motion to be just the first seven items listed.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Thank you. Just a quick question because I have the printout that was in the agenda packet like Ms. Teresa. For the items that she just read, do our numbers match, or have they already diverged?
Your numbers match. So the last one we stopped at was H, approve H-Tax committee recommendations, $600,000. That is, that was the last one you said, correct, Ms. Teresa?
Uh, yes, but I believe that is the one that you would want to pull out.
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. So yes, then all the way through the $600,000 for H-Tax committee recommendations.
So Ms. Newton, all those amounts match, yes?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? You recognize Ms. McBride?
Madam Chair, is this, what's the total amount allocated? Up all of the? Total amount, I'm trying to catch up with this.
And you're asking for which the-
For the ATAX.
Committee recommendations?
Yeah, we have 1, 2, 3, 4.
Those first four, if you move forward, what happens with the balance?
I want to know the total amount that we have available and then the balance.
Director Wilkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good evening. So as of June 30, 2023, there was $655,000 in accommodations tax fund. So this would use 135,000 of the 655. Yes, ma'am.
And, okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk? All right.
Trying to catch up.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I would like the same answer for the hospitality tax. I was waiting to go to the hospitality.
Yes, ma'am.
You recognize Director Wilkinson?
Yes, ma'am. As of June 30, 2023, hospitality tax fund balance was $16,787,884. And so this motion on the floor right now would be to use $2,19,470 of that. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Here.
You recognize Counselor Walker?
Auditor present down the seat. I would recommend. 6 under millage agencies.
Counselor Walker, can you say that again, starting at which one?
Yes, page 6, item 92.
So could you please read out what 92 is to make sure the folks on the phone match what you're looking at?
Absolutely. Item 92, sponsor administration, millage agency, recreation commission, approve the agency's budget request for fiscal year 25, 2-mill increase to operating millage. Requesting the mill cap of 0.6 mills plus 1.4 mills. Look back, offset by decreasing the debt service millage by 2 mills for one year.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Recognize Counselor Brenham, and then Councilwoman Newton?
Mission, 2-mill increase, operating millage?
That would be correct, yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Newton, I believe that was you?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, we discussed this in our previous budget hearing, but just confirming that increasing the operating millage by 2 mills while acknowledging the offset in the debt service means that it's a net wash and a zero tax increase to approve this item.
That would be correct. Spot on.
Ms. Newton?
That was my question.
Okay, and you heard the response, or are you?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair? Uh, this, and you can stop me if we need to take the vote before I ask a procedural question. But in the past, we've kind of gone through, sometimes in honks and sometimes one by one, but kind of throughout so that we know what we've done and what we haven't done. I would think that would also be helpful for staff to keep track of what we voted on and what we haven't, so we're not skipping back and forth.
I think staff in the room is, everyone here has out a lot of paper. everyone here has out a lot of paper and checking. I see several people with laptops, so I think it's happening live as we speak, Ms. Teratio.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Recognize Councilman Walker.
Thank you. I was going to say, and Auditor Broali is here and he can correct me, but it's my understanding that with respect to RCRC's request, this is just for one year. And the offset, again, is by decreasing the debt service millage. The debt service millage would automatically revert back to, would increase again, I guess you will by two mills or go back to what it is currently next year. And I guess council will have to remember that the two-mill increase in their operating millage, that's for this year, unless we forget next budget season. And, you know, and the two-mill increase remains on the books. But it's my understanding that it's just offset this year by the decrease in the debt service millage and that next year, the debt service millage would go back to the two mills and their operating millage should drop back down by two mills. Am I correct in that conclusion or assessment, Auditor Broali?
That is correct. I couldn't have said it in a better-
Okay. So we just have to remember next year what we did this year.
Hoping staff will also help us and Auditor Broali as well. All right, any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
Oh.
No.
Oh, this, would you like me to repeat? Does everybody know what they're voting on? We good? Okay. Madam Clerk? The next person, nope, just keep recalling the roll, please.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
You're recognized, Vice Chair Pugh.
Is my vote to yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Walker, were you going to say anything next or?
No, I was not. No, no, I was chuckling at Councilwoman Weaver.
All right, so where we are right now, I think if we could finish millage agencies and then go back to the beginning, I think that would help everyone involved to stay on the same page. It seems like I would like to limit anybody else's confusion.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Councilwoman Weaver.
Thank you. I just, I know this language is here, I just want to repeat one more time. Requesting no-mill budget means requesting no tax increase. Am I correct in saying that? I just want to verify that.
Sir, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure.
A no-mill increase is exactly what they have right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're recognized, Vice Chair Pugh.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for number 93.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Ms. Newton.
Thank you. Mr. Pugh cut out entirely and I have no idea what his motion was.
Mr. Pugh, can you repeat your motion, please, for the folks on the phone?
Absolutely, ma'am, I would be happy to. Number 93, Columbia Aerial Mental Health, requesting no-mill budget at $3,017,923. I make a motion to approve it.
A motion, there's a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? You're recognized, Councilman Walker.
Thank you. So for what I'm looking at here, a no-mill budget increase for Columbia Aerial Mental Health would be But I see what's requested is $3,017,600. $3,017,000, $3,000,000, I'm sorry, can't read. $17,600. So it seems that there's a discrepancy between the no-mill budget and the, what's been requested. So can someone address that?
Is that you, Ms. Wilkerson, or the auditor?
I think either of them.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Wilkerson, you're recognized.
Thank you. So the request that was submitted was $50,000 more than the, what is listed by the auditor and confirmed. And Mr. Broali, please speak up if you have anything different. But in the conversation, they have a carry forward of $50,000. So they are able to use that in the new fiscal year.
Aerial over plus the no-mill budget would meet their request.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Auditor Broali, did you have anything to add to that, sir? That's correct? Okay, thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Based upon that, do we need to amend any of the motion language that Mr. Pugh said? Are we good to go? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Vice Chair Pugh.
I would like to make a motion for number 94, the public library requesting no-mill increase.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Vice Chair Pugh.
96, Midlands Technical College. I would like to make a motion to approve their request with no-mill increase.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion for number 97, Midlands Technical College Capital Debt Services with a no-mill increase for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Sorry.
You're recognized, Ms. Teratio.
Thank you. I'm trying to go down my list and I understand it's a little bit different. It looks like we might have skipped over Riverbanks Zoo and Garden.
Yes, ma'am, and so as this, as we're handling the millage agencies, the maker of the motion has the ability to make the motions he would like. So as he takes a break or there's a chance they come in, the maker of that motion will have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I make a motion to approve the Riverbanks Zoo and Gardens operating millage at 0.7 mills for fiscal year 2025? In the amount of $1,517,888.
The motion, I'll second it.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Okay. So I just want to speak first, usually I wouldn't do this, but as the original maker of the motion, I do want to say a few words. And then after that, I believe I heard Branham, then somebody online, then Mr. Livingston. Newton, thank you. So the motion currently as it states, the zoo has a current millage of 1.4 on our tax bill. This motion is to reduce that amount to 0.7 mills on our tax bill and to provide the additional funds that the zoo has requested from hospitality tax dollars. Late last year, there was lots of discussions with this body as related to the funding of the zoo with additional bonds and support and how we could help with using some hospitality tax dollars to help alleviate the tax burden to our taxpayers because of the bonds that will appear on future tax bills for the zoo. And so this motion is a follow-up on that conversation late last year to help with our residents and reduce the impact of the tax burden on their bill. So let me go with the people in order. So I'm sorry, Ms. Barron, yes.
And I'm only inserting here because of what you just stated. The motion, as I heard, did not include the hospitality tax that you just mentioned.
Let me say then, we can say the intent of the motion, because you're right, she did not include that piece. So you are correct, yes, ma'am.
So I just want to be clear that what we're voting on is not the motion that is on this paper, but what was stated, the hospitality tax amount is not included in this motion.
Correct. That would have to happen under the hospitality section of the budget. You are correct. So the intent of why the motion for the reduced millage.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had Councilwoman Branham, then Newton, then Livingston, and then perhaps Ms. McBride. Welcome back, Ms. McBride. All right, Ms. Branham, Councilwoman Branham.
Yeah, that was going to be my ask, is if we could pair that line item with what was at least that line item 24 with the hospitality tax portion of those funds, just because they're so closely related. And it's a two-pronged approach and those are the two prongs. So that would be my ask for a friendly amendment and that's it.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Branham. And that would be number 24 in our budget motions.
25 for those of us here, it's okay.
25 in the amount of $1,501,712.
All right, so Councilwoman Branham made a friendly amendment. Councilwoman Teratio accepted as the person who seconded the motion, I accept as well. Any further discussion, Councilwoman Branham?
I mean, not for me.
Councilwoman Newton, you're recognized.
Y'all just did my work for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Livingston, you're recognized.
Kind of similar to my concern to it. I don't want to vote for the reduction in the millage and then all of a sudden, the vote for the hospitality doesn't get approved.
So the amendment, sir, is now they're both together. Sir?
So the amendment is a part of the motion too now?
Yes, sir, so-
Hospitality tax?
Yes, sir. So that was a friendly amendment and Ms. Teratio accepted, so they are now grouped together. So that would be line 25?
Now, just going forward, are we going to ensure, we're going to about make the hospitality tax funds every what is the agency like the current? They have to compete? As with your other agencies? We're going to do that?
No, sir, we have not. Typically, we would need to figure out if folks even want to take this approach first. And then I think if that motion passes, then a motion, a separate motion could occur to what happens next. But I don't think folks have that is the approach yet. We haven't-
I had to go reference something, or for us, I had to give them hospitality tax and take away the money from the bond. We need to treat other ordinance-
Ms. Livingston, you done? Okay. Councilwoman Rod, you're recognized.
My concern is that we're reducing their millage by 50%. And based on my knowledge of hospitality funds, it's by state law and that there are only certain ways that you can expend hospitality funds. So I am wondering about the impact of reducing the millage. And will the zoo, I guess this is the zoo, right? Will they be able to address their needs with the hospitality funds? So I have concerns about, and then we've got them at 50% reduction and they're not able to meet all their needs. So that's one, and I don't know if anybody can help me address that issue.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll let Ms. Newton speak as well if she would like to. But in my conversations with the zoo, because definitely talked to them about this before I made this motion, they definitely felt as if hospitality tax funds could help them continue to operate. And not only, you know, Richland County giving hospitality tax funds, but also other municipalities looking to give them hospitality tax funds as well for operations. So they felt as if that was an acceptable means for them to continue to operate.
That was my major concern. Thank you.
Ms. Newton, did you have anything you want to add? I know you're the liaison to the zoo.
Sure, I'll just concur with what Councilwoman Mackey said, that I did have an opportunity to have a conversation with the zoo. Of course, the intent of this motion, as I'm also a signatory, is that this is something that we would review every year. And in no way is our intention to not have the zoo be able to operate the way that it needs to. But it's acknowledging that we do have this additional source of funding, H-Tax, which can help meet their needs and just offset the tax burden to our residents. And of course, and I'm not sure, because Mackey mentioned this, if we decide that it didn't work well this year, that it was too cumbersome, et cetera, then we can always change the approach that we take next year. But I did get confirmation that H-Tax would meet the needs that they have.
Thank you. That addresses my question. Just a follow-up. With any grants that we receive based on past legislation, there is a requirement for grants for hospitality funds, that there be a written grant in advance. So do we have, not only for the zoo, but for all of the hospitality funds? Is there written documentation of a plan as to how the funds will be expended within the budget?
I would have to ask ACA Thomas for that.
Madam Chair, for me?
You're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, there are many groups in our hospitality ordinance that are allocated funds annually, not necessarily through a grant like your tier ones, your ordinance agencies and others. This would be treated just like that. It's not actually a grant. They would have, to be able to get the funds, though, they would have to show that the funds are expended on appropriate on appropriate items in agreement with the state statute for hospitality tax.
Okay. Ms. McBride, you're recognized.
Thank you. So there are certain requirements for hospitality taxes. And one of the requirements that the county, I'm I think, based on what you just said, we have certain programs that we require to have actually a plan, a grant for them. And that the others can come and put in a general request. And we can fund them based on those general requests.
Those general requests typically come in the form of a motion from council. They actually typically do come knowing what the funds will be used for with the zoo because it is a tourism-related ordinance that has been discussed with this group. As to the process for H-Tax, we do have a committee. But as far as a formal process for other hospitality tax funds, that would need to be decided by the body.
One follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not addressing this specifically for the zoo. I'm looking at the whole hospitality funding and the procedures that we are taking in deciding who's going to get hospitality funding and who's going to have to write a grant and whether it's going to be competitive or not. Those procedures, I'm trying to look at the different procedures in place regarding that. And I understand about the zoo, that part. But I'm looking at all procedures so that when others come in, I can make sure that we're treating everybody fairly with it.
That would be a policy decision for the body.
I guess the decision is already made if we're doing this. Thank you.
No, ma'am, that's not, I would say that this is one indication from a council member for a motion.
Okay, so we might be, we might be voting on something that there's no policy- Okay, so we might be, we might be voting on something that there's no policy on.
Policy for hospitality tax is based upon the use of the funding by state statute. As far as the council's policy related to hospitality tax, I can't tell you what the actual policy is for the use of all funds other than the committee grants, which are based on a competitive process for grants.
Which I am very well familiar with. That's why I was trying to get a rationale for how we're using the others.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. McBride, you, okay. Ms. Baron?
Thank you, so some of my comments or questions are related to some of the things that Ms. McBride just lifted up. But before I go there, I want to ask the question about, we are allocating the $1.5 million in H-Tax fund, that's a one-time request. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so as it be a one-time request, I just want to go on the record to say that I do think that there is some, that we need to be consistent in how these requests come. Because what I would not want is there would be another organization that would come before us and ask for these funds. And we don't have a mechanism that says that they, that you qualify for them or you don't qualify for them. So I know that this is a budget cycle, but as we move forward in months to come, I think it's going to be important that when we have these items, especially something with such a large amount, that we are, that we're very intentional in how we give these funds out. Because I think it's a great way for us to supplement our budget and move dollars around. But as we are moving these dollars around, we also, I would like to note that that this would be, this is an open option for others. I know it's a creative way for council members to make motions, but there may be some, maybe some other organizations that, had they known, or had, I'll just say, had I known, I'll just use myself as an example, you know, maybe we would have made some motions a little bit differently. So I just want to put that to the body, I don't know what committee or whatever, maybe there's a motion that has to be made to come before council to get it to a committee or whatnot. But we don't have to belabor the point. But I do want to just go on the record to state that.
Thank you, Ms. Baron, and I want to, I guess, also say, just on the zoo's behalf, they did not make this request. So I want that to be clear, the zoo made a request, a no-mill increase budget. So they did not request for hospitality tax dollars. And so I don't want it to appear as if they came and requested for us and were giving them a special process, they did not. They asked for a no-mill increase. I made the motion as an alternative solution to the conversation that happened last year. As we know, we approve additional bonds for the zoo and the impact it would have on taxpayers. So I made the motion to, as a possible solution, or as a solution, to reduce that impact on taxpayers. And that's simply all it was, the hospitality tax dollars met the need of the zoo, they met the state requirements for hospitality, and it was an option at our disposal to help do something for our residents that we know the tax burden is a big thing, a big deal for them. And so that's where it came from. If the body is not in favor of that, if the body feels that that is not a direction we want to go in, and that it creates, you know, confusion for other nonprofits, that's fine. But the zoo did not make that request.
I mean, and I want to be clear, you know, I appreciate your creativity. And so that's not, it's not, you know, yeah, so, and, and I think anybody knows, especially y'all know, like, I live at the zoo, I love the zoo. So I definitely support us being able to continue to fund the zoo. While at the same time, I just want us to be fair about our process. And I would never want anyone or any organization to feel like that we are favoring one of the, one over the other. And so I just, I appreciate, and I'll say it again, your creativeness. And even to just clear things up as to, you know, what the zoo requested and what they did not request, because I, you know, I'm full support of the zoo and the things that they do for Richland County.
We have Councilwoman Teresha and Councilwoman Newton. Oh, I'm so, wait, I'm so sorry. Councilman, I mean, Councilmember Livingston did have his hand up before you two, so I apologize. Ms. Livingston, you're recognized.
Just a quick question. The zoo bond is a county bond, correct? It's paid by them folks at the city of Columbia, for Richland County. And if we choose to use this much of our hospitality tax money, which would reduce the impact of the bond, how does that affect the city pay back of the bond? Does the city benefit from that because they're not using hospitality taxes? Is it not possible that? But taxpayers in the city of Columbia paying for the bond is what I'm getting at.
City taxpayers are also county taxpayers, so they would benefit as well. If you're asking about city hospitality tax paid to the zoo, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer.
My point is, if we're spending this much, reducing the bond with our hospitality tax, and the city's not using the hospitality tax to do it, wouldn't we be paying more than our share?
That's a possibility, sir.
I need someone to explain how that's a possibility. Because the same tax bill goes to a city person, so explain to me how.
Correct, it's not impacting taxpayers. It is only impacting the use of hospitality funds.
How is it not there?
You're saying who's benefiting and who's not, what are you saying?
We're reducing our hospitality tax.
Yes.
But they're not, so therefore, we're going to be expending more money to them.
From a hospitality tax fund, yes, sir, I see what you're saying, yes, sir.
He's saying we're using county hospitality funds to save city taxpayer dollars, is the way I understand it.
Our taxpayers as a whole will see a reduction in their bill.
Yeah.
Because we have the same tax base.
Yeah, but my concern is, you got a city that's getting twice as much in hospitality tax, and we're using ours, they're not using theirs. That'd be problematic for me. My other concern is, I mean, I think if we don't say, you know, the hospitality tax can be from a, if it can be treated like the museum and adventure, and all with an audit, as an audit for hospitality taxes, they're not as guaranteed as likely to probably get it. And I'm afraid it might possibly put them at risk in doing so. So those, just my real concerns by just changing without a whole lot of questions and information that I think I need to find out. But those are some real concerns, because it's possible that they don't get that hospitality tax money next year. And I think it could put them at risk. And with that said, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we fund the our zoo that requested no milledge.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Newton, Ms. Teresha, you're recognized.
Sure, thank you, and the conversation has gone many different places from what I originally raised my hand. I just want to say, in conjunction with what all of our council members have said about fairness, I just wanted to point out for any of the listening public that what we're talking about right now is a milledge agency, and that it's not just any organization that might come and request funds. It's the milledge agency that currently receives funds, and we're using a really narrow pot of money, which is the hospitality tax funds, for which every organization is eligible. I know that my fellow council members know this, I just wanted to say it for the listening public. And as it relates to the zoo and changing their milledge number, what I will acknowledge and what some of the concerns that Councilwoman Livingston has expressed is certainly the onus would be on us as a body to ensure that the zoo continued to receive hospitality tax funds in order to be made whole. And so that is something that we would have to be responsible for. I know that I'm personally willing to make that commitment during my time on council, but it's not the same as having guaranteed milledge, of course, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teresha, you're recognized.
Thank you, my question is regarding whether or not the zoo has been approached about the change, potential change in funding source.
Yes, ma'am, I have, as well as Ms. Newton, have spoken with them, and they are aware and fine with it.
Thanks, just wanted to get super clear on that, thank you.
Any further discussion? You recognize, Councilwoman Branham?
I'm gonna vote no on the substitute motion, because I like the offset motion pairing that was there. It maybe is not, we just did an offset-type motion as it related to the Recreation Commission. And so I love the fact that, as Councilwoman Newton highlighted, this is related to a milledge agency, and so reducing that line item is a direct decrease impact on taxpayers. It's a tax reduction, it's a reduction in taxes for property taxpayers, so I'll be voting no, thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, I, as the maker of the motion, will also be voting no. I think there was, last year, we heard a lot from our constituents about the increased bills as it relates to the zoo's bonds that will appear on tax bills. And I think if we have an option at our disposal that allows us to reduce taxpayers' bills, then we should look at utilizing that, so. All right, Madam Clerk. And to be clear, there is a substitute motion on the floor in a second that is for no.
Bill, no.
A no-mill.
Thank you, request, no mill.
So.
It, sorry.
Just wanted to point, so you're making the motion and you're voting no? I didn't know you could do that.
No, no. He made a substitute motion, so it's no longer my motion that's on the floor at this time.
Voting on Paul's motion.
Yes, so Paul's motion is the, is the no-mill increase.
All right, somebody needs to sit down here and keep me posted on these.
Got it. Mr. Walker, bring his chair in closer and help him. Madam Clerk.
Branham?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Mc, Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, so now we're back at the original motion that was on the table.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Motion to be made again, or is it back on the table?
It's back on the table.
Back on the table.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, so it's back on the table.
It's back on the table, the original one, yes, sir.
It's already been made, we're back to it, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We're still under milledge agencies, and we have two left under this category to complete before we go back to our original grant section.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Councilwoman Baron.
I'd like to move to approve Richland School District Two at the request of no-mill increase.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Madam Chair. You're recognized, Councilwoman English.
Item 98, I would like to approve Richland County School District One at the no-mill increase.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Ms. Baron, Ms. McBride?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is one of those issues that are, one of these topics that are very, it's a difficult one, because we already know that there have been lots of mandates placed on our school district. And I want to go on the record to say that I feel the very same way about Richland Two. I have said over and over from this dais, from months, probably as early as last November, that the cost of doing business, whether it's your personal business or here at the county, it costs more money to do things. Whether you pump gas, whether you go to the grocery store, it costs more money to do things. And now with the school districts having some additional mandates from the state level, I do believe that they are warranted, they need more money to be able to do the things that they need to do. Now, I won't even get into, you know, all of the commentary of as far as what individuals think is fair, or what is right of the amount that they need. But at the end of the day, I think about the children that the school districts have to educate. I think about the educators and the many teachers that we want to maintain and to keep them right here in Richland County, educating our young people. But this is a very difficult place to be, and a very difficult decision to make, because when we look at what is being requested of council versus what the no-mill increase is, last year, I think, Richland One, there was a deficit of $12 million, this, the motion that's on the table now is a deficit of $6 million. And so I don't know how we fix some of the things that appear to be broken. And I dare not try to manage other elected officials. But this is something that I said last year, I would like for not just Richland One, but a lot of the other milledge agencies to continue to have an open dialogue with council members so that we can know what the needs are prior to budget cycle. Because when budget cycle comes, everyone has an ask. And not having details really continues to make this decision very hard to make. So I just wanted to go on the record to state that, thank you.
Ms. McBride?
I want to echo what Mrs. Baron said. I guess my concern is I don't know the impact of a no-mill cut cap budget. So a no-mill budget. And it's going to be very difficult for me to make a decision, not knowing the impact. I tried to read some of the information, because I've missed some of the meetings. I understand that part of it was for teachers' salary. And I'm not sure about the other issues, but I am concerned that it is very difficult to find teachers now. And to not, I don't know what level, salary level they're on, but that's very important, that we be able to recruit teachers. And so that's my major concern with not having a no increase with the mill is that how will it impact our teachers, and how will it impact our students? And I don't know if anybody here is able to help me with that question or not.
You recognize, Councilwoman English?
I too agree with Councilwoman Baron, you know, it's extremely hard. I was listening to a school board meeting last night, late into the night, after I was reviewing the budget. And one of the things I paid really close attention to is the question was asked several different ways, several different times. And it says, will this affect teacher pay? And the answer was no on all of the occasions. And so I agree with you with that, and that was one of the, one of the hard choices in making, being able to have everything there, being able to see everything that's needed, and making sure that we are able to pay those teachers. So thank you for asking that question, because that was a huge concern of mine, too. And I do have it on tape, if you want to listen to it.
Any further discussion? Oh, Ms. McBride?
So let me make sure, it will not impact the teacher's salary?
Salaries, no. And that came from Dr. Witherspoon himself.
And that came from Dr. Witherspoon himself.
Thank you. Ms. Barron, you recognize?
So, it's, um, since Ms. English is, is the bearer of information, I, I have the question. So, when you say it's not, the, the no meal increase, they, what you're saying is that Richland One has stated that a no meal increase does not impact the, the teacher's salaries. That is correct. And so, um, I'm gonna ask this question a, a little bit further. Does it impact the requests or, or what has been, um, with the, from the State House, how they have, the General Assembly has mandated or said, you know, the minimum is fifty thousand dollars and such? Is that looped into that same decision? Do you know that? No, I don't. Um, but one of the specific questions was, and it was asked several times, "Will this impact teacher pay?" And Dr. Witherspoon answered, "No." Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair. May I say something?
You recognize, Ms. Walker?
I was trying not to, uh, but I was just listening to the conversation. But, um, and after this, I'm gonna listen for the rest of the evening because we gotta buy eighty-something other items we gotta get to. Um, I think it's important to understand that we are not the General Assembly. We don't set teacher salaries. At last I recall, I, I thought the General Assembly, they approved, well, they're going back for a budget, but what's being floated, I believe, is increasing teacher pay to maybe forty-seven thousand a year. It's just shy of fifty thousand dollars. But this council, at least since I've served on it, has always been very supportive of public education. There's not been a time where we have reduced the budget for any of our school districts. I'm looking at what Richland One was approved for last year. That was two hundred and fifty, just shy of two hundred and fifty-five million. And this year, a no meal increase would put them at two hundred and sixty-nine million. In the conversation I had with the auditor earlier today, that number's expected to be higher. So, a no meal increase this year would put them at an additional fifteen million dollars, uh, in revenue. That is what this body would be doing, uh, on, for public education here in Richland County if we were to approve a no bill increase. So, we are increasing their funding. We are not decreasing their funding. And as anyone has suggested, we're decreasing their funding, but I don't want that to be the narrative coming out of this meeting that somehow what we may do here is insufficient. And also, the onus is on the General Assembly as well. If we have state mandates that are coming down, I don't think it's incumbent upon Richland County Council to try to figure out a way to finance or subsidize state mandates. We have a legislative delegation for a reason. We have members of the delegation who are alumni of Richland One. I'm not calling anyone out, but I believe that you have to know your lane and, uh, you, you also have to know your limitations. And so, if we are going to approve a fifteen million dollar increase for Richland One, then I think it's upon, or it's incumbent, rather, upon members of the delegation also, uh, to step up and see what, if anything, they could do to procure money out of the state budget, which last I checked was over thirteen billion dollars. I think it, I think asking for additional six million dollars out of a thirteen billion dollar budget, uh, is, uh, is not a tall order. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pew?
No.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Taratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Madam Chair.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. McBride, you recognize?
Alright. She called me. She caught me off guard. That's a no vote. That's what I was trying to-
Okay. I want everyone pleased to remember to, per the rules, your vote, once the clerk calls, is your vote. So, I will allow Ms. McBride's vote to change because we did it earlier with Vice Chair Pew. But let's please all try to make sure we abide by the rules and your vote is your vote when you say it.
I apologize for that.
No, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair?
Taratio?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I should've said, I should've said my name.
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay. Um, I'm looking at the second reading motions list, uh, number nine, uh, special revenue hospitality tax, approve H-tax council discretionary at eighty-two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars for each district. Um, oops.
Okay, hold on, Ms. Taratio. Just everybody's here, we are now going back to page one to start with the grants and from this point on, we will go in order through the remainder of the list. Alright, sorry, Ms. Taratio.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
That total amount is nine hundred six thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh, move to approve.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, uh, related to item nine, approve H-tax, uh, council, uh, discretionary, nine thousand, nine hundred and six thousand six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Taratio? Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Madam- Ma- Madam Chair?
You recognize Ms. Barron and then Ms. Taratio?
Uh, yes, so, I'm, I'm going on the list, our most current list. So, I'd like to approve items ten through twenty. Do I need to break each one of them down?
Um, Madam Chair?
You recognize.
Uh, would the maker of the motion accept to, um, on item seventeen, to fund at-
You have to say what seventeen is, because your, your seventeen is different.
Thank you. Approve funding for, approve funding for Southeast Rural Community Outreach, SIRCO, um, to approve them at the last year's number, which was ninety thousand.
I'll accept.
Thank you.
Alright, so we had a motion by Ms. Barron. I'm assuming that Ms. Newton, did you, um, no, Ms. Taratio, did you second that?
Uh, I will second it. Yes. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep up.
Thank you. So Ms. Barron made a motion for items, um, on our sheet here in council chambers, item ten through twenty. It was seconded by Ms. Taratio. Then there was an amendment to that motion for item seventeen, for SIRCO to be awarded at last year's award for ninety thousand. Ms. Barron accepted that amendment. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Taratio? Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair? Um, just one moment, Ms. English. I want to, I don't know if it's Director Wilkerson or ACA Thomas. Is everything okay so far? I'm looking for you guys to make sure. Okay. Councilwoman English, you recognize?
Um, I move line twenty-one to approve the Lower Richland Sweet Potato Festival at forty thousand. To reduce that amount to forty thousand.
Second.
A motion is second for line, um, twenty-one, in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Um, Director Wilkerson, you recognize?
Yes, ma'am. Um, can we just clarify? So, um, the committee has awarded Lower Richland Sweet Potato Festival twenty thousand. Their request is seventy thousand. So, is this a motion for an additional forty for a total of sixty, or is this forty in total?
Total forty.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Taratio? Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Recognize?
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve items twenty-two through twenty-four.
Second.
Madam Chair?
That motion is second. We need that discussion. Can we pull out, um, twenty-three and twenty-four? Because, um, one overrides the other. And I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're voting on. That's fine. I just want to make sure we're clear so no one's confused. So, Ms. Barron, are you good with your motion being twenty-two?
Just twenty-two.
And, okay.
Oh.
So, you're good with twenty-two? Okay.
Yes, that's fine.
I'm sorry. Who's, who made your second?
English.
I did.
Okay. So, alright. You second that amendment?
I second, yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Ms. McBride?
Um, for the amendments for, um, item twenty-one and twenty-two, it says, um, funding at, I'll just do twenty-two, funding at fifty thousand would increase the use of fund balance by forty-four thousand. So, could you help me understand about, um, hospitality defined balance and with that part?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so as mentioned earlier, uh, one of the earlier motions, the committee recommended, um, or they, uh, approved six hundred thousand, um, for the competitive grants. So, of that six hundred thousand, um, Latino Communications was awarded six thousand. Their request was fifty thousand. So, to increase it to, by forty-four thousand, the only place to pull that funding from would be from fund balance.
From the fund balance for the hospitality?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Which, as mentioned earlier, has about sixteen million or so in, in fund balance.
Um, Director Wilkerson, so for clarification, when we're looking at twenty, uh, number twenty-one and it says use of fund balance for forty-four thousand dollars, is that forty-four thousand dollars already included in motion six, where we approved the use of fund balance?
No, that would be in addition to.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew? McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Taratio? Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the carryover of hospitality dollars up to three hundred thousand dollars of unexpended hospitality funds from each council member district for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, sir. You recognize Councilwoman Weaver?
I'd just like to thank Madam Chair for calling me and explaining this, the, the Joe Walker Equalization Act, uh, which- because it affects me more than anyone else and, uh, I appreciate the Chair explaining that to me. And, uh, I am willing to go along with this.
I, I appreciate you, um, explaining that and, and giving Joe Walker a nod. Anyone? Any other further discussion? Councilwoman McBride, you recognize?
Just a comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with, um, I think what's the capacity at, um, three hundred thousand? Is there anybody that would have over that amount now?
Yes, ma'am. It's Councilwoman Dawn Weaver, courtesy of his predecessor, Joe Walker. He is the only person. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, isn't, I would like to direct this to the administrators. Um, is it not possible, if Mr. Weaver wanted to, that he could turn that money back into, um, county? The hospitality funds, if he did not want to use those funds?
The, that would actually happen. So, the motion that you make would ultimately mean that any of those excess funds automatically goes to the balance.
I'm not talking about the motion. I'm saying, without this motion, could he just, could he give those funds back if he chose to do so?
I don't believe that's the way they're allocated based off the previous council motions, those, those funds. You made a previous motion to allow those funds to roll. And this motion now, you're doing the same thing, but you're limiting it. So, the council has taken an action, so he could not independently take an action of his own.
He could not independently say that I'm going to give those funds back. Okay, that's what I want to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Would you like to put that on the record? Councilwoman Walker? Alright, Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, this is only to address motion number twenty-four.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Taratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I'd like to make a mo-
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to move to approve, uh, items twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Um, the neighborhood redevelopment, approve neighborhood improvement grant recommendations in the amount of ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Approve Conservation Commission grant recommendations in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And approve, uh, various grant-funded departments, um, approved department requests that are applying for external grants um, in the amount of one hundred thirty-three million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. So, those three items.
It's for, um, thank you, Ms. Taratio. Can I get a second?
Second.
A second. Um, Director Wilkinson or ACA Thomas, could you clarify? I'm, I'm not sure if the numbers she said are correct, so I want to make sure.
Yeah, so it should be number twenty-six, um, which is ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty for neighborhood improvement grants, number twenty-seven, two hundred and fifty thousand for Conservation Commission grant, and then number twenty-eight for a hundred and thirty-three million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
Thank you. Do we need to amend the motion to reflect those numbers? No, we're good. Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Taratio? Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved. Baron?
Okay.
Alright, we have completed, uh, the grant section of the budget. We will now move to, uh, general fund. I move to approve projected operating general fund revenue as presented in the FY twenty twenty-five recommended budget book, including sufficient operating mileage to achieve, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-one million, three hundred and forty thousand, and five hundred dollars in property tax collections. That is number twenty-five of a motion and a second. Twenty-nine. Sorry, twenty-nine. Any discussion? Councilwoman English?
Yeah, just the clarification of the two hundred and sixteen million next to it.
Director Wilkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you. So in the motion, the one hundred and thirty-one million that was referenced is just related to property tax collections. The two hundred and sixteen million that is referenced is all revenue. So that would include business license fees, building permits, anything relate, any revenue in the general fund, including property taxes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Make a motion to approve the general fund transfers in from H-Tacs and A-Tacs funds as presented in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five recommended budget book. This is item thirty.
Okay.
Motion is second. Any discussion? You're recognized, Mr. Livingston. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognize, Councilman Weaver.
Can I make a motion to approve items number thirty-one through thirty-five, all administration requests?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve thirty-one through thirty-five. Want to get clarification from staff related to number thirty-three. If there's anything there, we need to aid to lump this in with this motion, or does that need to be pulled out?
That, at this time, it can be lumped in with the same motion. This is just to use assigned capital fund balance in the amount of six point two million.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. You're recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item thirty-six through forty?
Motion is second. Any discussions? You recognize, Ms. McBride?
Yes, for item thirty-six. That's going to substitute for the public policy position. There are another position available for council staff, because we're in dire need of research and public policy. Without these positions, and we've had them on, we've had, made, we've made this request several times. And I think the positions are there, we just have not funded them. And I think it would be an asset to council, where we don't have to do all of our research. And that we could have a position that's dedicated to council. It could have helped in, in the past, in, in a lot of different ways for me. And once we had a research position before, and it was really good to go and get the pros and cons of different issues without having to do all that research yourself if you don't have the time. So my question is, did we discuss this with our council staff? And I'm, I'm having to back up, so excuse me, because I was absent.
No, no, you're fine. As the medical motion, I'll just say that, yes, I agree with you. In the staff list of new positions for the clerk's office, there were two. There were, there's the research and the public policy. And so this motion is to replace only the public policy. So that's still, that one position would still be in the clerk's office. So instead of two, it would be the one research. Yes, ma'am.
And looking at the budget, I think I recall that the salary is very low. So I don't know whether that was a salary for four months. It was like twenty-six thousand dollars, and I don't know where you can find any type.
It wasn't for the full year, no, ma'am. So we went, they went through that as well during the budget presentation, because they knew, once we approved, it would take time to even advertise and find a person. And so it was not for a full year.
So you projected a, a cost of how many months we may have for, for next year?
Not me personally, but the staff. I, I didn't. But yes, ma'am.
You know I love budgets. So, so that, so what is the full position? The amount for the full position? You sound back.
Are you asking about the one that's in this motion, or are you asking about the one that's left?
Yeah.
In this motion?
Either one. It's, they're about the same.
Yes, ma'am. So based on the solicitor's requested position and the public policy position, they had a similar budget.
So what is the salary for that public policy position?
Director Wilkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just, sorry, bear with me one moment. So we funded all new positions at half a year, starting January one. So quickly, I'll, I'll try to double this in my head. So for the research, I'm sorry, was it the research analyst or the public policy?
Well, they were about the same.
Yeah, so the, the public policy is right at thirty-four thousand dollars for half of a year. So sixty-eight thousand would be all in for the research analyst. That includes benefits. And the public policy was right at forty-four thousand. So that would be eighty-eight thousand for a full year, all in.
And I'm sure that we discussed this with our HR personnel.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Brenham? Okay. You're recognized.
I just want to echo Councilwoman McBride. We, I am very much looking forward to us having research support and policy research support, or, or crafting, drafting of policy positions and things like that. It would be extremely helpful, as most of us have other jobs that we do in addition to this, and could really use the support. And as I recall, just off of memory, we increased the Solicitor's Office budget from last year to this year by eight hundred thousand dollars, which I want to say was around fourteen to fifteen percent increase in their budget, which I was excited to do, because they deserve it, and they're licensed professionals, not unlike me as, as an attorney. So I'm very happy to support them with that substantial increase in their budget. But I'll probably be voting no on this motion.
Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, can we repeat the budget numbers again? Which ones we're voting on? Thirty-six to forty this time?
Yes, it's your motion, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. You're recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items thirty-
Well, you already made the motion. Just repeat it for the record. But it was, you already made it. We had discussion on that one.
Thirty-six through forty.
There you go.
Thirty-six through forty. Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Recognize.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items forty-one through forty-six.
It wasn't a second, sir. That motion dies for lack of a second. I'd like to make a motion to approve items forty-one and forty-two. Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Recognize, Ms. Livingston? Do we need a second first, sir?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item forty-three. We're now, I see, we're now in discussion. You recognize, Ms. Livingston?
Now, I recognize that, and I share the goal to making sure we have a limited budget, and making sure that we have a responsible budget to increase in particular nature. But the reason why I bring this motion, motion for us is, is not to necessarily increase someone's budget from a previous time, but to hopefully they can get what they received the last time. You know, and I'm referring to senior resources. You may recall, senior resources have received at least five hundred and forty thousand dollars for each of the last six or seven years. This year, that budget is being recommended at a much lower rate of some three hundred, seven thousand dollars, which is one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars less than it received in, in, in the last six or seven years. And so by, by motion, it should try to reinstate them at the same level that they had in the last six or seven years. And a little history come with that, because, you know, this is somewhat of a designated agency for Richland County. The history is that you had a Richmond Election County Council agent for many years that was sanctioned by Richmond County Election County. Election County moved out, and so therefore, Richmond County itself decided to have a public-private partnership with, at that particular time, senior resources. And that's how we got to where we are now. And so it's, it's my recommendation that we add one hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars to that budget to bring it whole back to last year's amount. And my recommendation is, since there's a, a, a concern about not increasing the budget, my recommendation is to go through line thirty-seven, which is the general fund expenditure from this budget, where we're expending some two hundred and thirteen million dollars that relates to the general fund. And my motion is to add one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars to the senior, senior resources budget. And where that would come from is, we just simply remove that one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from the general fund. So the general fund transfer would increase one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. And the reason, the reason why that would not be a budget increase, simply because it would be coming from the general fund revenue that added to what we're already using from the general fund. So, so, so that is my motion, Madam Chair. And, and, and to speak to that motion also in the future, it, it, I would wish that we look at some other way of funding senior resources. Currently, we have, you know, for example, when Election County split from Richland County, their resources for seniors became an mealage agency. They don't, they don't have to compete with others. They just simply get funded every year. You have Fayetteville County, for example, that's in their general fund budget, their line item. Same old thing with Newbury County. And I just think, well, in the future, we ought to look at ways to consider treating our human resource department, human resources group the same way. Community, I'm sorry, senior resources. So that's, so that's my motion. To just, go ahead.
I want to make sure you finish. You had a motion and a second, so we were in discussion. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Livingston. I have Baron and then Teresa.
So to that point, I, I'm a big fan of senior resources and the services that they provide to our seniors in Richland County. And noting that so many presently, I mean, based on what the presentation we received a couple of weeks ago, kind of, kind of hit a little different when, you know, Ms. Boozer got up with all those plates. You know, it hit different than the number of seniors that are not getting meals. But as I stated before in our committee meeting, that I do think that if this body is invested in funding resources for seniors, then we need to find a way that we can fund it at a consistent level, so it's not fluctuating. And that's, you know, that's if, that's if it's the will of this body. It may not be the will of the body, so I'm not going to, you know, assume anything. But I, I do have mixed feelings about where we are getting the funds from. And I do have some questions. So I would like to direct it to the administration or finance, budget, whoever, you know, as to the point that Mr. Livingston, I need a little bit more information about what Mr. Livingston stated about taking this amount of money from line item thirty-seven and, and its impact. Because I'm, I was a little unclear, that was not clear to me. And so if you could explain that further, so that we can know what it is that's taking place by now, adding the one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars.
I found something, I say thirty, it's actually line thirty-eight. Actually, transferred from, transferred out from the general.
Okay, I, I still, still have the same question.
Right, right. Let me change your question.
Director Wilkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you. So that line is related to transfers out from the general fund. And so really what this is, is offsets to other funds. So I can, you know, it's over fifteen million, but I'll just give you a brief overview of what that means. So we transfer out five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to pay our IT computer lease. That's not, not something that we can choose to decrease. We also transfer out five point five million for our vehicle lease replacement program, another, you know, payment that we have to have. We transfer out one point two million to our victim assistance. That is a fund that just does not fund itself. And so the general fund has to supplant that. We also transfer out one point, almost two million dollars to our SRO program. That's, again, the general fund offsetting the cost of the SRO program. We transfer out four point three million to our Public Defender's Office, again, another program that does not fund itself. We transfer out one hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to the Conservation Commission. That is a commitment from previous councils. We also transfer out a little over a million dollars, which is half a mill, mill value for the Economic Development Fund, another recommendation of council. We also transfer out thirty-five thousand and another three hundred and twenty-four thousand for Title IV to funds that just unfortunately don't fund themselves. So the, the money has to come from somewhere. So in total, that adds up to a little over fifteen million, which is that transfer out piece.
Councilwoman Baron, you're recognized.
So when we talk about transferring these money, these monies out, now we're adding this one hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and sixty-four thousand roughly in this category. And it, and I just, just for the general public that's listening, is being transferred out from where?
So, so the fifteen million is being transferred out of the general fund into these other special revenue funds. I believe the motion by Mr. Livingston was to decrease that transfer by one hundred and sixty-three thousand, which would offset. But, you know, as I mentioned here, these are all dedicated purposes. So if we choose to decrease the transfer, that just means that one of these funds is not made whole. They, they would not have enough, enough revenue essentially to be a balanced budget.
I just want to make sure, Ms. Baron, did you have any further questions for Director Wilkinson before? Want to make sure you got what you-
I'm, I'm clear. I, I got my question. You answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Livingston, just clarification, because Ms. Teresa is still waiting.
Yeah. My motion was to not decrease it by that amount, but add one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So, so it'll be coming from the general funding, what, the general fund itself? Not, not from the, not from, from this amount. So you, so you, you're adding, you're adding it to the amount you're transferring out.
Which would, unfortunately, that wouldn't accomplish the goal. So the transfer out is from the general fund. So that is an expense of the general fund that goes to these other funds.
That's what I'm doing.
So if I would increase that, that would be, that would double it. So in order to offset what you're trying to do with your senior resources, we would have to decrease that transfer to come up with enough money in the general fund to fund the senior resources in full. So by decreasing that transfer, these other funds would not be whole. So even though it would technically come from the general fund, that would mean a special revenue fund would then be in a deficit position. So the only other place would be fund balance.
Thank you. And I, I think, Director Wilkinson, what you said, I want to make sure that that is what is clearly stated. This motion requires use of fund balance, the general fund balance.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The use of a transfer out, item thirty-eight that is mentioned, is not possible. It is use of general fund balance. And we have all heard about our general fund balance, what it means to dip into our general fund balance, and the impacts of that. So that is not related to item thirty-eight. Ms. Teresa, you're recognized.
Thank you. And you led right into my question, which was, given the reality of this, it would require use of fund balance, general fund balance. And so my question was going to be to ask about, asked to be reminded about what our general fund balance looks like and what impact this amount of money would have on the general fund balance.
A.C.A. Thomas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Currently, at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we had forty-three million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in unassigned fund balance. That means funds that are available for a rainy day. That is, that, at the end of that year, when we proposed our budget, with the twenty-four budget, was a twenty-two point six four percent available of the prior year's expenditures. With the balance, with the budget that we have proposed, which is a totally balanced budget, if we expend all dollars this year that we have proposed for FY twenty-four, which I do anticipate we will be close, if we don't increase our fund balance at all at the end of FY twenty-four, and we propose the budget that we do now, and we propose the budget that we do now, with a balanced budget, we would be at twenty-one percent available unassigned fund balance. That only leaves one-million-six-hundred-nineteen dollars, nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars before we drop to below twenty percent. Twenty to thirty-five percent is where our available unassigned fund balance policy says that we should be, by best practices.
And you said twenty to thirty-five percent?
Yes, and we would be at twenty-one with the expenditures proposed. If we drop another one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, that would probably bring us to the twenty-point-eight percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to talk a little bit about this motion. I know this body as a whole, we've worked for several years to really create a process, which is something that we talked about tonight in other items, that we want to have a process, we want nonprofits to know how to go about, how to go about coming to council. And we want to create a fair process, so everybody knows what the rules are. And I understand the history that Councilman Livingston has provided about senior resources. And the Community Impact Grant Committee, where senior resources currently funded, we are in our second year of funding. We have had several conversations about the organizations, about the applications, about how to apply. And at no time was it then mentioned, when I think that could have been the appropriate time, to mention, let's look at treating senior resources differently. I do think that at this point, based upon our budget and where we are, that we really have to consider, how do we want to go about funding nonprofits? There are so many nonprofits that we were not able to fund this year. Really, really good nonprofits. There were a lot of nonprofits this year that we also could not meet their full ask. A lot of good ones that have been around in the community and continue to provide services for seniors, for our young people, for folks with facing mental illness. And so we as a body have tried really to be, what I would say, really fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars, because this is general fund money that we are allocating to nonprofits. And we have to make very difficult conversations or decisions about who to fund, how much to fund. And I can tell you, there is a lot of organizations right now that we didn't fund, that they only asked for twenty thousand. And so senior resources, we were not able to meet their full funding request. At three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, it is still the largest amount of funding that we have given to a nonprofit. And I fully support senior resources and what they do in the community. I think if this body wants to get them to their previous amount, we should look at what other organizations that we are willing to not fund to help meet that. But to use our general fund balance, I think it goes against many of the principles that we have stated as a body, that we wanted to go towards, to really create a process that's fair for our nonprofits and not have them be confused.
Madam Chair, I'd like to call a question, in the interest of time, we got a lot left to do.
Motion has been called.
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Please call the role.
Teratio?
This is for not calling, this is for the motion itself. Can you hear me?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
I'm soaking.
To approve motion number forty-three. Mr. Livingston's motion.
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Hold on, please, because I'm seeing too many disconcerting looks. Attorney Wright, are we out of order, Robert Rule's order?
What you're doing is voting on Mr., Mr. Weaver called the question, that means that you need to vote on Mr. Livingston's motion.
Right. Oh, okay, all right, so, yes, okay, we're good. No.
Mike, English?
Oh.
Motion fails.
That was the motion. Yes. Like to make a motion to approve item forty-five and forty-six.
Okay.
Motion is second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, for clarification purposes, this is for motion number forty-five and forty-six, correct?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Thank you. Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey? English? Motion approved.
Madam Chair. Director, you guys talked at the same time?
I yield to.
Councilman Baron. Appreciate you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve line item forty-seven through sixty-six.
Second.
Motion and a second for forty-seven through sixty-six. Forty-seven through sixty-six, any discussion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you say those numbers one more time?
So for you, it's starting with special revenue funds. So you would do, it's forty-seven on our end, which is economic development, and then it goes all the way through sixty-six, which is Department Impacted Child Fatality Review.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just had one question. Okay, for the, just to remind me again, special revenue, these are the things that pay for themselves, pretty much? They generate their own revenue, am I saying that right?
Director Wilkerson.
Well, no, I think what you're thinking of is an enterprise fund, that does pay for itself. Special revenue funds are truly that, they are for a specified purpose. It would be great if they all paid for themselves, but as I mentioned a minute ago, a lot of these have transfers from the general fund to make them whole. They do not, some do pay for themselves, but not in general. Enterprise should.
Okay, but no tax increases built in here that I'm unaware of? No tax increases, okay, I'm good.
Madam Clerk.
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair.
It's Teratio.
Move to approve number sixty-seven, temporary alcohol permits motion.
Thank you, the motion is second, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Just because this is a one that I, I think I forget almost every year. So the temporary alcohol permits, this says that it would use fund balance. Does that mean that the temporary alcohol permits fund has a revenue, has a balance, a fund balance?
Ms. Teratio, I guess, Mr. Livingston was making the motions, I don't know if you want to him to answer or A.C.A., I mean, Director Wilkerson, or? Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
The river alliance is funded by Midland County, West Columbia, Case, et cetera. This year, they're just requesting, asking from all the entities to do so. But keep in mind, this is not a tax increase, because this is from the temporary alcohol permit funds, and there's a fund balance within that fund, so therefore, it would not require a tax increase.
Thank you, that's what I was asking about, was about what the fund balance is for the temporary alcohol permits.
Clarification from Director Wilkerson, please, because a tax increase versus use of fund balance is two different languages. Can you please clarify what this true impact is of this motion?
Yes, so the impact here is truly a use of fund balance, which this fund does have a fund balance presently.
Okay, and could you, can you share what that is, do you have that on hand?
Yes, it is currently five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
You're recognized, thank you, Ms. Baron.
Welcome. Can I skip, can I go from one category to the next?
Oh, I would like us to finish everything in this category.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve line item sixty-eight.
Motion is second. Line item sixty-eight is countywide departments approve other fund new positions as presented in the budget book. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Before we move on to our next category, it appears on item forty-four, which is a motion submitted by Mr. Livingston, we need to take action on. Item forty-four that you submitted?
Move approve item forty-four, Madam Chair. That is the Midlands, Main Street District, asking for
Second. The motion is second, any discussion?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
We have Branham, then Teratio.
Again, I'd like to check in, are we using the fund, general fund balance?
No, sir, not for this motion, this was budgeted at the requested amount.
Thanks.
Director Wilkerson, could you say that again, I'm sorry?
So this item is, it's from our lump sum agencies, and they submitted their requests back in January. And so they submitted at fifty thousand dollars, which is what was budgeted for, so this would not increase fund balance at their request.
And so why wasn't it already included with our other agencies?
It's just a separate line item, so it's not part of SIG, it's not, it's kind of like LARADAC and the Central Council, and COG, sorry, Central Midlands COG, it's a similar organization to those. So each of those had separate motions.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, we're now in category four, debt service?
I'd like to approve line item sixty-nine through seventy-eight.
Second.
Second.
The motion is second to approve all items listed under number four, debt service category, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey? English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Chair.
You're recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number seventy-nine, capital projects.
Motion is second for approval of seventy-nine, that is the item under category five, capital improvement plan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair.
Recognize, Ms. Baron. Oh, oh.
Go ahead, Pew.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve line item eighty through ninety-one. Teamwork, baby.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve eighty, item eighty through ninety-one, under category six, enterprise, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey? English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, so now we are at category seven, which is milled agencies, we voted on that earlier. And I believe we have concluded all items. Any questions regarding the budget for staff? All right, so now going back to our agenda for items seventeen A and B, I'm assuming we need to have the motions for those, because I read them, and then we went to the motion list. All right. I'll entertain the motions for items seventeen A and B on our agenda.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Madam Chair, can I just clarify, we're talking about number seventeen?
Yes, sir, so.
I thought the fowl thing we put off, the animal in fowl.
Correct, so that, we deferred that, so now that may be A.
Okay, so we're approving B and C? Oh, B's now A, dang, I'll change these numbers on me, A and B.
It happened at the beginning of the meeting when you voted to defer.
Oh, okay. I gotta watch these letters change, I'm telling you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English? Motion approved.
Thank you. Also, just for the viewing public, this is second reading of the budget motions that we went through. Third reading will be our final reading. Next is item eighteen, report of rules and appointments committee. Councilwoman Baron, you're recognized.
Just want to say that having to give this report after what we just did, that's a labor of love. But anyway, so just want to, the recommendation of the committee for appointment for the Midlands Workforce Development Board, where there was one vacancy, the committee is recommending Deborah Strickland.
You've heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, we do have one item for action, and so this body may remember several months ago where we had to take up an item for Richland County First Steps Partnership Board, and that was to, we begin to appoint for this particular board. Now, as a part of our process, each one of our boards and commissions that we appoint for, we have a standard description that talks about the organization, when they meet, the terms of the board, and the like, and you'll find that on page three-hundred-and-thirty, and this is the recommendation coming. and this is the recommendation coming from the committee for approval from council.
You heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second, is there any discussion?
Brannum? Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, this is our report.
Thank you, next is item nineteen, report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee, Councilman Walker, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, the item on the agenda for the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee report, St. Polo Road Windsor Lake Greenway project. Staff recommends canceling this project due to safety and security concerns. This is a project that includes construction of an elevated shared-use path along the I-20, I-77 interchange ramp. It actually connects to Polo Road and Windsor Lake Boulevard. The greenway alignment would cross a waterway with a boardwalk and require cuts and fills that would greatly increase the cost of budget, and it would hide the trail from public view. The connection to Windsor Lake Boulevard has no planned bicycle or pedestrian facilities, and the road has obscure visibility due to horizontal curves in the road, and so, again, the recommendation from the committee would be to cancel the project, that is also the recommendation from staff, and for what it's worth, this item, or this project rather, is in my county council district, and I certainly, you'll support the recommendation to cancel the project. The funds that would remain as a result of canceling the project would be one million seven hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents, and those funds would be reallocated toward the Columbia Mall Jackson Creek Greenway.
Heard the committee's recommendation? And it does not require a second, any discussion, Ms. Teratio?
Thank you, just asking, this was originally a penny project, is that correct?
Still is, that's correct.
Okay, and it will require, this will be first reading, it will require three readings in a public hearing?
Oh, it doesn't.
Okay, in the past, when we made changes to the greenway, to the projects, that's what happened, what makes this one different?
Well, it's their right, what would make this one different, my understanding that it does not require three readings in a public hearing, so.
Right, only a change to an ordinance would require the three readings in the public hearing.
This is not a change to the ordinance, we're just canceling the project, assuming the vote is in the affirmative tonight.
Well, give me just a minute, I'm trying to, Ms. Teratio?
Yes, I mean, I asked a question, I heard an answer. I'm not sure exactly how this is different than other projects, is this, that this is a cancellation and not a change?
Correct, we're not changing the ordinance. The recommendation is not to proceed with the project, which does not require changing the ordinance per legal.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to really talk behind the committee, but I think a little extra clarity might help in the sense that we do not own the property, the property owner is concerned and is not going to also provide the property in addition to all of the other things that were stated, so it's not feasible for the county to move forward with the project because you won't be able to do it, because the property owner is not going to participate and is going to create an issue for not only the property owner, but as the council member stated, all the other concerns related to this project, if you were to see where it was, you would maybe have a clearer understanding of why this is not a safe project to complete.
Madam Chair?
Yes, you're still recognized, Ms. Teratio.
Thank you, and my question really wasn't about the feasibility of the project, it was really just about the process of how, of making a change to the expected projects. So, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Teratio, I believe, Ms. Baron?
Okay. I just had a quick question as to how, when the determination was made to cancel the project, how did we then determine what project we would then fund? Like, so, yeah, what was that?
Mr. Walker, is that you, or is that Maloney?
I want to answer the question, but that's what's been recommended, tonight the vote is not to reallocate the funds. Tonight, the vote is to cancel the project, assuming that this body agrees with the recommendation from the committee. But, and in the event the body agrees with the recommendation from the committee, one of the suggested uses for the funds that remain would be to reallocate those funds toward another greenway.
That helps, because you made a statement about the Columbia Mall area, and so I just wanted to clarify to make sure that we were just voting on the cancellation, or we were voting on, it sounded like we were voting on the cancellation and the new project, so I just wanted to get that clear.
Only reason I mentioned Columbia Mall, because the other greenway that is in, that's close by or in the vicinity is the Columbia Mall Jackson Creek Greenway, which is also a penny project.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, Madam Clark?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And, Madam Chair, that concludes the report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee.
Thank you, next is item twenty, report of the Detention Center Ad Hoc Committee, Vice Chair Pugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff requests consideration for closure of the Alvinas Glen Detention Center Juvenile Detention Center, and the committee recommends approval.
You've heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second, is there any discussion? Madam, I'm sorry, y'all, it's late, Ms. Baron? I know who you are.
So, no, I just, I wanted to, if you could, Vice Pugh, just for the record, state why we're closing the juvenile detention center, and if there is another alternative.
Mr. Brown, you're recognized.
The request to close the juvenile center is primarily to make sure that Richland County can take care of the responsibilities that it has related to detaining individuals in Richland County. So, at the local detention level, we are responsible for detaining male individuals, female individuals, who are adults and not juveniles, the state of South Carolina has given a statutory responsibility to the Department of Juvenile Justice. And so, in order to continue to address the operational efficiencies that we talked about at Richland County, so that we can make good solid use of the taxpayer dollars that we are responsible for adhering and dispensing on the responsibilities that we have, this was one of those processes that we went down and operationally came to the realization that this recommendation makes sense, so that we can comply with the standards that we have related to staffing and operational facility services for Alvinas Glen Detention Center adults. So, again, in brief, it is not our responsibility to fund juvenile detention centers at the local level. We are responsible, according to minimum jail standards, to operate an adult facility, and we need to continue to operate the facility at a higher level, and this will allow us to continue to make improvements along that way, and thus, we brought this to the council for consideration, and it is our recommendation for you to consider this.
If I may, just one final question, and I'm in full support of the committee, but I just think that I received a couple of emails, so I just wanted to go on the record so that people understand exactly what we're doing, and that is, with that, by us closing this detention center, then that means that we don't take in juveniles from this point.
Correct, that means that the agency that is responsible would be able to do their responsibility while Richland County could do its responsibility.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Councilman English, you're recognized.
I'd just also like to point out that we're not just throwing them out, there is a transition period that we're also going through, so we're being nice, we're playing nice in the sandbox. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Pugh?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? All right, you've heard the committee's recommendation, Madam Clark?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
Recognized.
Move to approve twenty-one A?
I'm sorry, Ms. Teratio, hold just a minute, please. Vice Chair Pugh, does that conclude your committee's report, is there anything else that you have?
Yes, ma'am, that concludes my report.
Thank you, next is item twenty-one, other items, you're recognized, Ms. Teratio.
Thank you, move to approve items A through H.
Second.
Motion is second for twenty-one A through H, Madam Clark?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker? Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Motion approved.
For reconsideration?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration, Madam Clark?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride? Livingston? Teratio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron? Walker? Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, next is item twenty-two, executive session item, and we have, from earlier, item A B, which is the Alvinas Glen Detention Center update, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clark?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Teratio? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Walker? Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Now on executive session. Now on executive session. [END OF TRANSCRIPT][200.12]